I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberated and just as a.
Thank you all for coming. We'll start our meeting at thirty on the deals. I have to read this little piece of paper. The opening statement for the public hearing Monday, twenty-third, twenty-fifteen, appeal of determination to grant business license to Black &amp; Yellow LLC. The public hearing is now open in the matter of appeal to the city's recorder's decision granting a business, city business license to Black &amp; Yellow LLC for Oregon Medical Marijuana Program Dispensary Business located at four thirty-three Northwest Highway one oh one. The appellants are Fred and Linda Cormelius, is that?
Rennellis.
Carmelius?
Rennellis, uh-huh.
Thank you. Joanne Evans, Keith and Jane Johnson, Jim and Robin.
Shaw.
Shaw, and Phil and Renee Taunton. The applicable criteria upon this, which this case will be decided are: equal pay ordinance number three oh two, amending ordinance number two forty-three, adding regulations for medical marijuana facilities operating within the city, ordinance, operating within the city, ordinance number four forty, or two forty-three, excuse me, licensing of business, and equal pay ordinance number twenty-four, section three dash one one zero, places in the retail commercial C-one zone. All testimony, arguments, and evidence received during this public hearing must be directed toward this applicable criteria or to such other rule, law, regulation, or policy which you believe to apply to this case. They are to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, preclude the appeal to the state land use Florida appeals on that issue. The appellants have the burden of proving that the applicant has not met the relevant criteria in order to be granted a city business license. The hearing procedure will be the presentation of the staff report, the appellant's presentation, testimony in support of the appeal, testimony of opposition of the appeal, and testimony from any person that is supporting or opposing the appeal. And number six, rebuttal by appellants. If any party provides additional documents or evidence, this body may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Prior to conclusion of the hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony. If there is no request for continuance or to hold the record open, the public hearing will be closed. The record will be closed, and this body will deliberate and make a decision. If you plan to provide oral testimony, please sign in and state your name and address for the record before testifying. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone has already expressed the same thoughts, it is perfectly acceptable to state that you agree with those statements of the previous speaker. Now, I ask council members for any declarations of conflict of interest or bias, expertise, contracts.
Mr. Mayor, it would be regret and respect for both parties present that I have to declare that I have a direct conflict of interest, and so I have to recuse myself.
Granted.
Thank you.
Does anyone object to any council or hearing and consideration this case due to conflict or bias? Anyone here? Good. Let's begin.
Mayor, do you want me to call the role?
Oh, yeah, excuse me. Let's call a role established for them.
Jean?
Here.
Here's your round. Joe, I know you recused yourself, but for the floor.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Sparks?
Here.
Bolson?
Here.
Matha?
Here.
Ken?
Here.
Grant?
All right, the hearing is now open. Are we starting with staff, or?
We will, but before I start reviewing the staff report, which you all have a copy of, I would like to present to you, for your information, written testimony that the city has received for tonight's hearing. There are, and I'll, I'm not going to read them, but two of the appellants have submitted written testimony for tonight, and again, you all have copies of these emails or letters that came in. One is from Jim and Robin Shaw, they are appellants. The other appellants that submitted additional testimony for tonight is Fred and Linda Carmelius. In addition to those two letters, we received a letter from Cheryl Mothmas, and a fax letter from Gudrun Jacobson, and an email from Lynette Butt, and a handwritten letter from Carolyn Douglas. So hopefully you all have copies of those letters. You may not have had a chance to read them. Obviously, the appellants' two letters, they would be in support of the appeal. The other letters, Cheryl Mothmas, she starts off by saying she objects to the permit allowing a marijuana shop to directly run Highway one oh one. So I would classify her letter as in support of the appeal. Mr. Jacobson, his fax, he would like to voice his objection to the proposal. Proposal being the application to have a medical marijuana facility. So he also would be a proponent of the appeal. Ms. Butt's email, I think I would classify it as also, she would be a proponent of the appeal. She starts off by saying Dico Bay is a nice quiet community, and we do not need another head shop right on Main Street. The last letter from Ms. Douglas, I couldn't classify it. She's definitely voicing her concerns. She just said, "I would like to comment on the granting of a city business license to Black &amp; Yellow LLC," and she talks about how she owns and lives on property within one thousand feet of the proposed business, and then she voices her concerns. So I guess you can interpret that as a proponent of the appeal or not. Just someone providing their information. So with that being said, that is all the written testimony that has come in for you for this evening's hearing. So I'll start with my staff report. So the appellants, Fred and Linda Carmelius, Joanne Evans, Keith and Jane Johnson, Jim and Robin Shaw, and Phil and Renee Taunton. Attached to the staff report are copies of their original appeal letters, which you all have gotten before. The applicant is Black &amp; Yellow LLC. They are the entity that applied for the business license. So when I say applicant, that's who we're talking about. This is an appeal of my city reporters, my determination granting a city business license to Black &amp; Yellow LLC for an Oregon medical marijuana program dispensary business in the retail commercial C-one zone. Appeals of a determination to grant a city business license are limited to land use issues only, which means compliance with city zoning code, as stated in the notice of determination on the application for city business license that was provided to property owners within one thousand feet of the subject property. I would add a note here. Our ordinance three oh two, which amended our ordinance two forty-three, our business license ordinance, required that we would provide notice of a determination on a business license for a medical marijuana facility to property owners within one thousand feet. The normal notification area is to property owners within one hundred feet. So it was, the ordinance extends that notification. The location, again, the subject property is located at four thirty-three Northwest Highway one oh one, Dico Bay, and is further identified in Lincoln County Assessor's Map nine eleven five CA, S. tax lot fifteen thousand. So the applicable criteria tonight is the Dico Bay Ordinance three oh two, which amended our business license ordinance, and our business license ordinance two forty-three, as well as our zoning code section three point one one oh, which identifies uses in the C-one zone. Applicants' requests, Black &amp; Yellow LLC submitted application for a city business license for an OMMP dispensary, Oregon Medical Marijuana Program Dispensary Business, located at four thirty-three Northwest Highway one oh one. Again, you have a copy attached to the staff report of that original business license application. Appellant's statements, while they're attached to your staff report in the report itself, I didn't necessarily do verbatim, but I'll read through the gist of their appeal. So appellants, excuse me, Fred and Linda Carmelius state the following reasons for the appeal in their email dated August eleventh, twenty fifteen. "This is a retirement community and has been a safe place to live. Hence, we have no city police. This might change dramatically if cannabis store is allowed in our area." Appellant Joanne Evans states the following reasons for the appeal in her letter dated August eighth, twenty fifteen. "Dico Bay City does not have the ability to police a business of this type. Cannabis marijuana is an entry-level drug for youth. Dico Bay would become a destination for marijuana. It is better to have it a tourist destination. I would not want my city to contribute to pockets camp out on this small city street. Again, the city does not have the ability to handle these problems. The state police are already stretched to the maximum. Keep Dico Bay an all-American tourist destination." Appellants Keith and Jane Johnson state the following reasons for their appeal in their email dated August eighth, twenty fifteen. "We worry that there will be no enforcement of the laws governing this type of operation since we basically have no police force. We believe this could bring an influx of unsavory persons into the area, resulting in the potential for possible damaging consequences to our property. This affects us as neighbors as well as our entire community. We are concerned that our property values will be negatively altered by having this kind of operation so nearby. The city of Dico Bay is a very small community, and we feel strongly that approving this business will have a very negative impact on the reputation of Dico Bay and destroy the desirability, duty, and livability for all of us." Appellants Jim and Robin Shaw state the following reasons for the appeal in their email dated August tenth, twenty fifteen. "Who is going to monitor this type of business to ensure the strict marijuana rules are followed? We have no police to protect us now. Who is going to be available for suspicious activity calls?" Appellants Phil and Renee Taunton state the following reasons for their appeal in their letter, which is undated, but we date stamp everything that comes in, so it's date stamped by the city, August tenth, twenty fifteen. "Not only do I live in a neighborhood surrounded by young families, but it could also lower property value. Who would want to live near a dispensary? The north part of town is where you get the most foot traffic. Do you really want the families to stay in the condos that stay in the condos to see a dispensary as they walk into town? That is not a picture I'd want to stay in their memory. It could change their mind about our family friendly town. Please don't allow this type of a business to be the first impression to those that come to our town. This has been my family's home forever. Please don't change the quality of our home." So those are the five appeals that came, brought us here tonight. So, I'm summary, notice of this public hearing was mailed to the appellants, the applicant, and the property owners within two hundred feet, fifty feet of the subject property on August thirty-first, twenty fifteen, and was published in the September ninth, twenty fifteen edition of the news column. At the date of this report, this was dated last week, no written testimony on the matter has been, had been submitted to the city. So, the city council, you will review the application. That's the business license application for performance with the appropriate standards of Dico Bay ordinances. And so to facilitate your review, I've identified briefly the following issues. City Business License Ordinance number two forty-three, section four, requires: "Any person engaging in any business within the limits of the city on four or more separate occasions in a calendar year or on one single occasion for a period exceeding one week is subject to the license requirement unless exempted by this ordinance or expressly exempted by any other state or federal law." Ordinance number two forty-three defines business as: "Any activity or solicitation for consideration, profession, trade, occupation, enterprise, or pursuit of any kind conducted in the city Dico Bay except as exempt pursuant to section ten." That's a long way to, long way to say that if you're going to conduct business in the city, you will get a business license, unless one of the exemptions in our ordinance exempts you. And there's, there's a list, but in this case, a retail store does not get any exemption. City Ordinance number three oh two, which amended ordinance two forty-three by the addition of a new section ten, medical marijuana facilities. The new section ten defines and regulates medical marijuana facilities operating within the city. It requires that a medical marijuana facility business be registered with the Oregon Health Authority, may not be located within one thousand feet of Neighbors for Kids, located at six thirty-four Southeast Highway one oh one, may be located on properties within the retail commercial zone, C-one, the light industrial zone, LI, and the marine commercial zone, MC. And I made a notation, state statute prohibits medical marijuana facilities in other zones. In other words, the state statute says you can't try to place one in a residential zone. Ordinance three oh two also states that a medical marijuana facility may not be located on any property or in any building that also contains a residence or dwelling unit. It may not provide drive-through access to the facility. It requires a city business license be obtained and maintained and that notice of a determination on city business license application be mailed to property owners within one thousand feet of the subject property. In addition, that ordinance also provides hours and rules of operation, that there be no city liability and indemnification of the city by the applicant, and also requires compliance with state laws and rules. You have a copy of ordinance three oh two attached to your staff report for your comments. Now, the applicant filed an application for a city business license for an OMMP dispensary business located at four thirty-three Northwest Highway one oh one on July twenty-first, twenty fifteen. Determination to grant that business license for an OMMP dispensary business was made on July twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen, and written notice of the determination was provided to property owners within one thousand feet of the subject property. The fourteen-day appeal period expired on August twelfth, and that is noted because all of the appeals that were received by the city were received in a timely manner. We got them before or upon August twelfth. The subject property, at four thirty-three Northwest Highway one oh one, is not located within the one, within one thousand feet of the Neighbors for Kids at six thirty-four Southeast Highway one oh one. That's a restriction imposed by the city in ordinance three oh two. It is, however, located in the retail commercial zone. Retail store or shop, such as a food store, gift shop, drug store, apparel store, hardware store, furniture store, or similar establishment is a use permitted outright in the commercial C-one zone, which is pursuant to our zoning code, ordinance twenty-four. So the conclusions in the staff report, when you're, as you're evaluating this business license application, you'll base your decision on compliance with the applicable zoning code standards and the regulations and requirements of the city ordinances for business licensing. That would be your ordinance three oh two, and which amended ordinance two forty-three. If the council finds the application fails to satisfy the ordinance standards, it can move to confer with the appeal and deny the application, articulating the basic conclusions and rationale for the decision and direct staff to prepare findings for adoption. If the council finds the application satisfies the applicable criteria, it can move to uphold the determination to grant the business license and direct staff to issue the business license and to prepare findings for adoption. So with that, any questions I can answer before we move on with the procedure?
That's the end of the staff report.
Unless there's questions, I'm here to answer questions if there are any. And if there aren't, then it would be time then for step two of the procedure. You can ask for appellants and leaders of the city.
I'll just, can I just get one question first down?
You have one question here?
Very, now, there, from, and I haven't noticed in any from the staff report, is there any special ordinance regarding either, at this time, any medical or recreational marijuana sales in a, in a business in Oregon? Is there a special, are they restricted within special guidelines that would apply to the city?
Well, there are state regulations that regulate, at this point in time, the Oregon Health Authority regulates medical marijuana facilities. And in the city's ordinance three oh two, we require the applicant to comply with all state laws.
And, but as far as in distances and zones, probably it's like they're in an area that complies with city and state law, is that correct?
The city of Dico Bay's ordinances and the state law allows medical marijuana facilities in retail commercial zones to have.
Okay, and then, just out of curiosity, because there's a liquor store within, say, five hundred feet of the proposed marijuana dispensary. Are liquor stores limited to where they can locate?
As far as state law, I can't speak to that, but for the city of Dico Bay ordinance, it can be located in a retail commercial zone.
Similar to the situation? Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Number two, the appellants' presentation. Would you like to start?
Mayor, and the council?
Oh, no, we have to, don't we have to have her sign in? Have we had someone who wants to?
I was gonna get you.
So you just, you have to sign in, of course, that's all. The purpose is?
We have a register for that.
But what I'm reading is on behalf of the Shaws. I'm representing her at this moment, and then my husband will represent us.
Sure.
So am I signing for her or me?
Oh, that's?
Actually, you're the one present, so if you please would, and we'll just make a note that you are going to be reading something from.
Sign in and who you're speaking for.
All right, before I do that, can I say something to you? This is a petition that we have, we were out of town, so we only had so many, just a couple of days since we've been back here to do this, but if you're familiar with the street names, there's at least four signatures on all C. There's at least three or four on Vista. These are the ones you like living in that area. Stand, sir, we have three names here that oppose.
Give that to the recorder.
Okay, thank you. Thirty of them that say they would prefer, not prefer, but they highly oppose this. And I'm acting formally on behalf of Robin and Jim Shaw at this point, they're out of town. Says, "We appreciate the opportunity to address this very important issue. Unfortunately, we have previous out-of-town plans which cannot be adjusted to accommodate this meeting. When we first came to Oregon, we rented a home while we searched the beautiful Oregon coast. Our search covered Brookings to Astoria for six months. We finally settled on the city of Dico Bay. It appeared to be a quaint, small, friendly community. We have been happy here for over ten years with our positive experiences dealing with our city officials. Our primary concern is if this medical marijuana business is allowed to open right on Highway one oh one. It will give the wrong impression to the broad tourism base we enjoy. There is no doubt, if the shop had been opened when we moved here, we would have made the decision to purchase in a town that takes pride and credence in the impression a town conveys, and we would not have purchased in Dico Bay. As you indicate in your letter, notice of public hearing, it appears you are attempting to add regulations for a medical marijuana facility to operate within the city. This is an important issue that affects all Dico Bay citizens, not just those of us within a thousand feet. We feel it should be brought to the residents of Dico Bay's attention in the form of a vote before you make an irrevocable decision. At the very least, all residents should be made aware of this plan in the form of a letter mailed to their home. Additionally, as we stated in our, in our first letter, we oversee this facility as we have no, who will oversee this facility, excuse me, as we have no law enforcement in Dico Bay. It appears this will open the door to what's next. Because of hours of October first, medical marijuana dispensaries will be allowed to also dispense recreational marijuana. Don't we have enough unsafe drivers on Highway one oh one now? We hope this dialogue will continue before a final decision's made. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to voice our viewpoint." And that's the end. Thank you.
If I may interrupt her just a moment. The petition sheets that you handed in, I was just noticing that there's, there's coffee. There's an original in copies.
Because I didn't know if you needed to share.
So I'm distributing the copies, I'm passing them around, so the counselors will each have one.
We may not have run off enough, but you have the original.
I think, I think you might have brought just enough. The only thing I would note, the copies did not have the last signature that, on the original.
That is correct.
Mr. Redd, I believe. So, so the copies you have, is missing the, on the second page?
Did you guys each have?
Is it empty?
Right here.
Okay. So the original has one more signature than this copy that you're giving.
Could I make one more comment about this only? When my husband went around, one of the things he found, which is kind of sad, are Arch Street alone on all C, the painters are very ill, or he is very ill and she's very old. Some of these people can't come to these meetings and aren't as comfortable even with emails and up-to-date things, but they were voicing their opinions as best they could by signing here, but wishing, again, that they could express to you how much they did not want this to happen. And finally, for whatever good it does, we're directly up Sunset Street at the top there. They're on the corner. And right around the family's first to me. I have thirty-eight grandchildren whom I love very much. The oldest is only nineteen. And those grandchildren live, over half of them live within three hundred miles of here. And so they come down often to visit us. And I'm very concerned. So far, no one of my grandchildren have in any way been to smoke, drink, or use pot or anything, and I protect them as best I can from this. It happens right on the corner as they turn up to grandma's house every day. It's very upsetting to me. I would do anything I could to have it be even in the liquor store or anything else compared to right on the corner advertised out there. Marijuana to me is a gateway. I watch too many people, I'm an old lady, and I watch too many people start out with marijuana and end up with carstah. And we have people as it is, now that you've put up those beautiful locks, and I'm glad you did, indicating the areas. indicating the areas down there, the path, the beautiful benches, I'm thrilled with all that. But we're getting more and more people there as it is. If they're the good family people with their kids and the dogs that they're walking, that's fine. But if we get a lot of these others down there with drinking and smoking and everything, it's going to be a real problem. So please hear us, and if possible, need our objection, please. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask?
Thank you.
Relax, and tell me your name again.
Linda Cornelis.
Linda. You know, I'm sympathetic to your, to your statement and your feelings.
All right, I'm a nurse, so I know that.
Sure, sure, and pharmacology and everything, well, but yeah. Just so everybody's clear, I don't think that, and the, the, the people that have, that are applying for business license will be up after the appeals are heard. But I don't think that, that the medical marijuana dispensary allows for any, any smoking or participating, it's not like a bar where you can come in and sit down and take a smoke.
But since it is recreational starting October first, they can get it unless to the point where we do.
Well, I, you, you, it's, it's, they can't, it's against the law to, to be intoxicated and drive. Okay, whether that's smoking marijuana or drinking alcohol in excess, okay.
I'm just saying the location, those, sir, puts the alcohol up.
I understand.
Those cliffs out there and the beautiful paths and.
I just want, I, I, I just want everybody to be clear that, that, and I don't think that lawyering is going to be allowed there.
But it's, and we have no police, we have no way of knowing, and since all these.
We didn't have coverage with Lincoln County and Oregon State Police. Not, not full-time, but I mean, we did, we do have coverage. So I want you to be upset for, for the truth, you know, and the truth is that, that I'm getting from you is that like many of us, and you know, believe that, you know, in a drug-free lifestyle, that the kind of things that are going to be taking place at this facility are, you know, medical and I think the street sales, I don't think anybody's going to be doing, participating. I mean, we can't control everybody, but it's not a, it's not like a restaurant or a bar.
Right, and I understand that, but it's just that it's right on the corner where we drive up to the beautiful rocks that indicate, come down here on the cliffs. Today I had my neighbor call as an example, and she was very frightened. And she said, "There's a man right down on the bench down here, he's out again, and he's shooting." And she says, "I'm here alone, and I'm worried. What do I do? I mean, we're one of the only ones on that street that are full-time residents. Most people, this is a second home. We've lived here for, since two thousand, and this is our full-time home. And so people call us, and we're aware when there's a break-in. We're aware of the drinking and the loud things that happen on the holidays. And, and so all I'm saying is to put it right on that corner. When I have to drive to go get my grocery sample at Fred Meyer or Walmart, and I'm willing to get my car and drive, when you have ten facilities in one town and twelve in the other, right to our north and south, why not let them sell the marijuana and let us keep our beautiful? I mean, we really have a reputation here. People come from all over because it's so safe and beautiful. Let the other towns sell whatever they want. Why can't they drive a few blocks like I drive to get what they want? Thank you very much for giving.
Madam, you are, it was well put, and for your concerns, speaking for myself, my heart goes out to you, but the law is, the law's been voted on. We have these problems we're going to have to put up with. Counselor has his points as well as do you, but we're going to have to look at this thing and deal with it under the law. And as far as conjecture is concerned, whether it's on Counselor Grant's part or on your part, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. So it's one thing, it's going to have to be addressed. I am sympathetic to you. I am sympathetic to you, but I really don't have the answers, and that's why we're here tonight to decide whether or not we're going to grant a business license.
What about that one thing she read about children within a hundred feet? Have you guys checked with the numbers of residents that live around there? Because I know they're children.
If I might clarify on that, when the city adopted its ordinance specific for medical marijuana facilities and where they may be located, the state had already said that a medical marijuana facility cannot be located in a residential zone. So what it allowed cities to do was say, yes, they can be located in retail commercial zones.
Right.
But what our ordinance specifies is, is there's an additional restriction that you cannot locate in the city of depot bay, a medical marijuana facility within one thousand feet of the neighbors for kids, which is over here.
Just the neighbors.
Not neighborhood, families with kids. That neighbors for kids, that, that facility. So that is additional, that's why I'm explaining.
There are family neighbors, there are kids, and there are mothers with grandkids who have appreciated the benefit very much. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We do appreciate it.
You have a question, Counselor?
Well, Mr. Merritt, it just, it might help, Ms. Linda here, I just researched on Oregon.gov's website because she is concerned about people smoking in public. And the question under personal use on Oregon.gov's site is, when can a smoke-used recreational marijuana? As of July first, two thousand fifteen, Oregonians are allowed to grow up to four plants on their property, possess up to eight ounces of usable marijuana in their homes, and to one ounce on the person. Recreational marijuana cannot be sold or smoked in public. So it'd actually be unlawful to be on the park bench on the cliff and smoke a joint when consuming marijuana. I was on.
Thank you, Counselor. Steve?
I have a comment about the policing aspect of this. The first part of that is that there, there is a revenue component connected with this. City government, communities everywhere looking for additional revenue. And one of the things that we've talked about, and we'll talk about more, is increasing, using that revenue for increasing our enforcement in a, in a small community like this. So that's on my mind. And the other thing is that, last thing is, I'm drug-free and alcohol-free, and I've been that way for many, many years, so I sympathize with, with your argument. I really do. Thank you.
I'm a nurse, and I've seen a lot of, out in the community for my whole life been that way, and I'd like to protect all I can, not encourage it, but discourage it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir? My name is Fred Cornelis. I've been a fifteen-year resident of depot bay. And we moved here because it was a safe, quiet retirement atmosphere. And we like to see a clean, safe retail restaurant and recreational area. And that's what's been here. That's what's built here. That's what's encouraged by here, by, by the council and by the leaders of this community. And we wanted to see it safe. There are a lot of tourists who come to depot bay. And we do not, we do not want to see our community become a place to draw marijuana-smoking people who will cause more crime, prostitution, wild parties. And we just don't want to have depot bay become a sod and kumora community. Now, we can go get marijuana in ten places in Lincoln City. We get marijuana in, in a dozen places in Newport. But they have, both of those communities have adequate police protection. And we don't have any effective. This gentleman, Mr. Grant, talked about police protection. When we, when we've had it, had a need for police protection, it's an hour or two after, it happens before they get the state police or the sheriff to come down to our community. So I don't, I don't think you can say that we have adequate police protection at all. Now, one of the things I'm concerned about, in addition to medical marijuana, is I understand, maybe I could be corrected, but I understand that as of August one, October one, that those who have licenses for medical marijuana will be allowed to sell and dispense recreational marijuana. Now, that's not on the table right now because this supposedly only a medical marijuana license. But I don't believe that they're going to have to go to the, to the city council to get a recreational license. They're going to, it's going to be passed automatically. And that's something that we should be concerned about. Another thing that I'm concerned about is just as we have ten or twelve places in Newport and Lincoln City, if we get a license in depot bay, how many more pothouses are we going to be established in depot bay? In other words, it's going to be open market for more pothouses in depot bay. And we're going to, they're going to, that's going to be the same, same thing that happened in Lincoln City and in Newport. And I just don't want to see that happen in our community. One of the things I, I haven't been able to address because I haven't had time, but I think that retail rental establishments are going to suffer as retired couples and families are not going to tolerate the problems associated with recreational marijuana in this, this community. It's going to, that's what I'm saying, it's going to hurt a lot of rental establishments and a lot of restaurant establishments if they have a high traffic of marijuana people in this community. And another thing we, we have, we've talked about before, I just really want to re, re emphasize the importance, the fact that we do not have police protection in our community. There, there's, there's police protection in Lincoln City and in Newport both. But that's, that's, that's where they have, all the, where all they have, the marijuana dispensaries are. And we don't want to, we don't need to, we don't need to pay, pay other people to buy, to enforce the law about from marijuana dealer, dealers, and have to pay our taxes to, to support a police force because marijuana people are being, doing business in depot bay. I assume that you've all had a copy of this letter you had. Is there any other questions that you have of me? Thank you very much, and I appreciate that this is a difficult, it's a difficult decision. But I think it's the kind of decision you need to make to keep our streets and our communities safe. I'm afraid we're going to have an onslaught of crime and other, other problems if we have people selling marijuana on a street corner to 101. Don't let it happen. Don't let it happen. Please, I beg you, don't let it happen.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Well appreciated. Next, please. On the appellate side. On the appellate side, we have. All right, testimony in support of the appeal. Support the appeal?
You're supporting the appeal?
No. All right, moving on to number four, testimony in opposition of the appeal. Can I ask who that? What do you have, Mike? Sign, your name, please, what is your name and address?
My name is Robert Bailey, I live at three ten Northeast Williams Avenue, depot bay. My name is Robert Bailey. I've come here today and we have my wife, who is very ill and was in several car accidents, had a spine fused, green vertebrae. And I know she'd be upset that I'm discussing this at a public meeting, however it's necessary. First of all, let's clarify. Now, over twenty-five years sober, and I want to clarify studies that I have proof of, myself, marijuana is not a gateway drug to harder drugs. It's just not. There's no proof, there's no evidence, none. Second of all, we're talking about a medicine that's going to be dispensed. Second of all, we're talking about a medicine that's gonna be dispensed legally, as voted by the people of Oregon in 1998. And to clarify, in 1998, the voters, only seventeen thousand six hundred and ninety-nine people from Lincoln County actually showed up to vote. Out of that seventeen thousand, ten thousand five hundred and seventeen voted for medical marijuana. Only seven thousand one hundred and eighty-two voted against. Statewide, the population was three million eight hundred and thirty-one thousand seventy-four. Twenty-two percent of them are under the age of eighteen. Out of adults, there was six hundred and eleven thousand, or fifty-four percent of this state voted for medical marijuana. Twenty-three states have since voted for medical marijuana. It is now scientifically, and labs analyze this stuff, same as they do. The FDA analyzes pharmaceuticals, it's the same. What you're wanting to deny, and what I'm for, is to deny Samaritan Hospital Clinic to not be there because they dispense pharmaceuticals, same classification. They also, right next to the neighbors with kids, whatever it's called, right next door to it is a shell station that sells liquor. That you go in and out of the building all day long. The medical marijuana dispensary, as outlined in the Oregon Medical Marijuana Act, states, and the ordinance in the community was extended, I believe you said 302, that you added that to protect the neighbors for kids' school. In the actual state documents, as you probably well know, it says one thousand feet from any career school or any elementary school. Also, no one under the age of eighteen, even if the caregiver gets approval from the state to provide medical marijuana to their child. And more and more people, children who have epileptic fits, are starting to find out that the medical marijuana with low THC levels work for them. They're finding out that medical marijuana is good for people with PTSD. There's numerous amounts of qualifying diseases to get this. In order to get an OMMP card, it's difficult. You have to go to the doctor, you have to get it approved by the doctor. And not just any doctor, it has to be a physician. And they have to tell you it's okay, you have to meet the requirements. Then you have to fill out the documents, you have to get approved by the state. It's not something that you can just walk in the store and buy. The medical marijuana facility, as will be pointed out by the people that are trying to open this business, will have, and because it will be inspected, and if it's not in compliance, it will be shut down. It has to have more cameras than a bank, it has to have a specific site, state. Everything has to be locked up, controlled. No one without the OMMP card can get inside and even see the marijuana. No one under eighteen can get inside the building. Nobody in the building or around the building can smoke marijuana or take marijuana while engaged in the business. There's so much that the people who listen to, I'll get their names again, Lyndon and Fred, people who listen to you guys, and they listen to what you had to say, and they implemented laws to stop and control the medical marijuana. So there would be no children and no people hanging out, and potheads. They're not potheads, they're taking prescription medication. You didn't deny the people opening up the Samaritan Depot Clinic. You didn't deny Samaritan Hospital from dispensing it. You don't deny Walgreens and other things. To deny this is ludicrous. People come here, they're sick, if they need it, they need their prescriptions filled, they come here and get it. And there is no proof anywhere. I read all over the place, I've been reading this and studying on this for years. And there is no proof that it depletes the communities, rental properties, real estate, vacation, people coming to the community, it just doesn't exist. There's no, there's no substantiated evidence at all. According to what you just read earlier, by law, you should grant it. By law, by what the stipulation in the law is and what the stipulation in your ordinance is, you should grant it. I would like my wife to be able to go to the medical marijuana facility and get her prescriptions without a problem. Without having to go to Newport and to go to Lincoln City, or go to Salem, or go to Portland. Yeah, you can go there, but it's a long drive, it's dangerous. It's dangerous driving up and down these roads. And you know how busy it gets and how dangerous it is. I don't want to subject her to that. I would like it to be right here. Another concern that I have, that everybody's hearing about, is this tsunami and this earthquake that's coming. We need everything here that we can depend on in case our community is shut off. If the bridges go down, if everything is shut off, we need everything here. We have to have this. This should be part of the plan. When you consider marijuana as pot or some drug that's for recreational use, the state also approved that, they voted on that also, and it is legal in the state. And something else that this gentleman pointed out was that people are allowed to grow marijuana in their homes. So stopping a facility is not gonna stop your illusion of not having marijuana in Depot Bay. It's here already, it's been here. It was here illegally before, it's here legally now. People grow it, they grow it in their homes, they're allowed to, they're allowed to. As Mr. Teague said, you cannot smoke it outside. You can't hang on the mansion and smoke it, you can't hang in any, anyplace. It's, it's against the law, and it's still against the law to drive under the influence of any drug or any alcohol if you're impaired. And they just, after the legalization, they formed a drug recognition expert team of two hundred state police to go out and check the drivers to make sure that they're not under the influence. But the fact is, and, and the specifications in the OMMP law that these people have to, are required to follow are stringent, they're demanding. Everything, like I said, they have to be locked up, there has to be cameras all over the place. They have to have it on battery backup. It's more demanding than any place around here. The banks are even that close. So, and, and nobody can get in without it. It's, the one thing, twenty years of working in the Department of Corrections, they, they actually looked at the prison system and seen how they actually set up a prison and how people go in and out. And what they set up is a big, it's called a celling door. A celling door is where one door opens and the other one closes. Therefore, no door, there's no access in or out without going into this one area. The door locks, then the other door opens and then you can go out. That's the same in every medical marijuana facility. I would suggest, first reading, all those who are concerned about this, first reading the Oregon Medical Marijuana Act. And second, going inside a medical marijuana facility and seeing what it's like. It's, it's extremely professional, there's not a bunch of kids running around stoned and acting like bulls. It's extremely professional, it's like going into a doctor's office. I just hope that you guys say yes, and we can move on. Thank you very much.
Come on, please.
Hi, my name is Philip Lattigan, and I'll sign the roster here. I didn't want to bring up too much, you pretty much captured all of them. So, anyway, how y'all doing anyway? Fine. I just want to bring up one subject, and it was far as things in this town. As you know, a lot of us have lived here my, my whole life, and my family's, you know, hundred years here, and we've seen a lot of troubles come and go over our lifetimes and different drugs, heroin, meth, pills, abuse, which pretty much runs rampant through the state out in the black market. And it's everywhere, from here to there, back east, west, north, south. And on top of that, you know, already, all down through these gift shops, there's many of them. They sell bombs, kites, scales, other marijuana memorabilia. Seven or eight gift shops down there. Our gas station up in the north end of town sells everything to smoke hash oil, dabs, they call it. And I don't know anybody that makes, uses the old lighters or you stick the runcin' cans in them, but they keep two cases fully stuffed because they make quick ash out of that. And it's sold right off the shelf. They cram pot in a can or a jug, and cramp people to beauty, and it comes out in a firex thing, and you got hash oil. And all these, these different things for doing all that, ceramics, torches for smoking, crack, crack pipes, it's all just sold right there in the cabinets, up and down through the town, the stores, and those kind of facilities. And it's no secret. So, there's a lot there, and the medical end of the thing is highly controlled, which he's already stated. And I didn't want to bring up much more than that, but we have more problems in this town with alcoholism, and it's a bad one. A lot of people aren't with us in this town because of alcohol in our certain drinking facilities, I won't mention any names, but things run rampant in those places too. Off the foot, I don't know who they are, but we have prostitution all over our town. You know, stuff like that. And it's pretty much under table. The whole north end of town used to be our red light district when I was running. And they had a place up there, which is Pirate's Cove now, that's called Linda's Place. And it was a larder for many years, you know, with all the old commercial fishermen, loggers. We don't have things like that anymore. We don't have people driving like they used to. A lot of people got killed up and down this highway from just falling off the bar stools. They just let them get in their cars and take off. And we do have a limited amount of law enforcement in this town. There is undercover police in this town, working this town. The Lint team is in this town. Lincoln Interagency Narcotics Task Force is in this town. And I'd also like to say there's, I can't confirm it all, but there's seven police officers live in Depot Bay. From state troopers to sheriffs, to city municipal cops, other places, and a couple of federal agents live in this town. So, in far as the revenues from a medical facility, even with recreational use, that's gonna put the law enforcement, a better security system for this facility. And I know a lot about these things. My job in the National Guard of Oregon for many years, I'm retired now, but I'm a member of OMA, which is the Oregon Militia Association out of Salem. And state Capitol House people, I used to be a governor's guard, and for Underknew Goldsmith. And we go in, claim, close, security, clear areas before they come in, and then the state troopers bring them in. And I trained in seal, a lot of different things, and I used to teach state troopers when they're cadet, well, cadets, excuse me. And there's a lot of things around that people don't know. And I was into recon security specialists in the infantry units for many years here. With the 249th and 3rd Division, 43rd and 3rd Division, which are still in Afghanistan for the eighth or ninth tour. And there's a lot that I see around that if people knew, they'd be in shock what's in the black market now in the street. You know, we had an old adoption of a man, which was our Matilla, who I believe was a former National Guardsman. You know, it's about salute and reconnaissance, that size, activity, location, unit time, and equipment. And when you see stuff like that, and they're going on, there's a war out there, but it's definitely not in a medic controlled medical facility, which is, like we said, stronger armed than a bank, I guess. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Lyndon Duleo? I just appreciate the other, I'm married to Mr. Joshua Duleo, so my husband is the proposed dispensary owner. And I don't think I'm supposed to address them, but I kind of would like to say that we love Depot Bay, we love Depot Bay. It's a beautiful town. I'm, I'm smitten with Depot Bay. I'm a local real estate agent, I work here in town, I'm on the main, main street three, four days a week. I see exactly what happens right downtown Depot Bay. And our goal is to enhance and promote safety and promote healing and new studies in the medical marijuana and kill the black market. That actually does provide marijuana to children and anything else that you can think of, as I think he was trying to say. A medical marijuana dispensary run by a family of local people who want to do things right by the law, the rules are extensive. It is not easy to open a dispensary. There's a long list of things that comply with. The city license, business license ordinances are just the tip of the iceberg. We definitely did our homework to make sure that we would comply with all the laws, which I believe that we do. That's my testimony towards this specific thing. But separately, other than that, I would like to say that, you know, please, I feel for you and the fear that you feel, but it's not refer madness. You know, we have children, we are a family, we are local, we are here. And we love our community. It's not something that we're trying to kind of disrupt and ruin anybody's life, but it needs. I just want to say that, I don't know if I should address them or not, but it, it does hurt my heart that people have so much fear. And I can't wait to prove to them that there's nothing to fear. It's a, medical marijuana has been around a really long time. It helps a lot of people, it really does help people. Recreational marijuana is going to be very limited in sales. It's not gonna be a free-for-all for everyone to come get whatever they want, flop out on the sidewalk and all that. As you mentioned, it's not legal to smoke in public. It's definitely not legal for kids to be on the property. There's a law that goes into it to make it safe and to kill the black market and to make it a part of the community, bringing in taxes and revenue, help the police force. Although I can say, being on Main Street every day, we do have plenty of police, I see them every day, we are well covered in Depot Bay. But we wouldn't, my more... But we wouldn't, my more, that would be fine. Legally, I think we have a very strong footing, and I just wanted to clarify that. We are your community. We're not outsiders. We wanted to do right. We absolutely respect the people of Deepwater Bay and your communities. That is all.
We have a question from CalSTR.
This is Gilliam. First one to qualify this next ask. I leased your space that you just recently purchased, and most people know that I was kind of clownish about things. Stupid signs out on the street, tried to create buzz, bring people into my space. It was needed to bring in the trade to make that business work. And going off of Mr. Cornelius and Mr. Cornelius's comments about her grandchildren, I heard you now. I guess my question is, is that although we can't say what you're advertising and your persona on the street looks like, could you address their concerns about it might affect their grandchildren seeing a, I forget what you called it, ma'am, you called it, the name was a pot shop, I think.
I didn't use those words.
I'm sorry. Maybe it was your husband said pot shop. Okay, that's what it was. Could you kind of give us an idea of what it's gonna look like on the outside? How are you going to lay some of these fears? Because as you said, you are a community member, and you want to be a good community member and a good business community member. And I'm just wondering if you can address that one question about the look of people.
Absolutely. We're still working on that, obviously, but the outside, you did like the bright colors. We're working on painting the inside white, which might take another couple of months. And then the outside is gonna be a gray neutral color. We don't have our signs completely finished yet, but it's gonna be something very muted. So, no green, weepy, but then just, you know, a very, people who are looking for medical marijuana or even recreational marijuana, they know what to look for. It doesn't have to be flashy. It doesn't have to be roaster colors and all that stuff. We don't have a competition that Newport and Lincoln City have, so we don't ask for you to go there. So, our business is medical first. The medical marijuana is what our belief is in. I'm a very sober person. I hate addiction. I've seen people die, I've had family people die of addiction. I've had my boss die of alcoholism poisoning while I was gone for Thanksgiving weekend here. You know, I've seen addiction. I hate addiction. I despise addiction. Our point is not to get a bunch of people and to get them addicted and drug deal out like it's a black market. The black market is what people are afraid of. And our point is to end the black market, be a legitimate use, a legitimate business that brings them revenue. It doesn't need to be all that. Muted colors, simple, silhouette, green cross, that's all you need. I wish I had a picture for you, but I don't.
No, I think that's.
I've heard a lot of concern about the keeping the non-OMMP people out or juveniles. How, I've never had the occasion to go into a marijuana dispensary, so I don't know how they work. How does the controls work to say, you know, a sixteen-year-old comes in or, I mean, how is that controlled to keep those people from committing going?
My husband is trying to better to answer that question, but I can tell you that there is, the building is locked. Several different parts of the building are locked for different purposes. Nobody under twenty-one is allowed to be in any marijuana store or viewed or displayed or anything. It's a locked room that you are only accessible to with an Oregon medical marijuana card. Or in case of the retail, recreational, you have to be carded as age twenty-one. There's documentation that has to be taken before you are allowed even into that area at all. So, the storefront will be simple, clean, pretty nondescript, honestly. And then there'll be a waiting area for people to come in so we can evaluate whether their patients, what their needs are, or what to do with that person. And then they're kind of escorted into their, or the need for that, if that makes sense.
I'm no expert on the subject, but I have learned a few things because this has been on our plate, and it's a very serious subject. The one thing that I'm encouraged by, and I'd like to have you talk about it a little bit here for our benefit, is that I always worry about folks, even with marijuana overdosing, getting too much of one thing or another in the black market and people can get sick. And there are challenges with having too much of one thing in the, what do you call it, S, the THC or whatever. So, what I've learned is that in a medical marijuana shop, and that if there's retail sold there, folks can come in and really, with your intelligence and your education, it's a lot safer when you purchase. You can really ask for or describe what your needs are and find a fit so you, so it's a little bit safer when people go home and take the medication, I'd like to call it. Could you help us a little bit on that in terms of your own education and expertise and what you have to learn to really be in business? I imagine it's a lot to learn.
It is a lot to learn, and once again, this is probably my husband's area, but more than mine. And he'll come up and address that a little bit better. But there is absolutely just tremendous amount to worry about the plants and the different compounds and what's good for them. People use it for so many, from cancer patients to insomnia. And there's different strains and amounts that are best for each thing. An experienced bud kinder, as they're called, is someone who does know the levels, what's in which strains or plants or extracts or oils. There's a hundred different ways besides just, you know, rolling a joint and taking it out front. You know, that people kind of visualize in their mind. There's a lot of ways that cannabis can be medicinally, and it can be with somebody regularly, if you have a regular dispensary where you go and you talk to the same person, and you can say, well, this time these symptoms got better, but this one not so much, and maybe we could lean more towards that. You have somebody to work with to convince your symptoms or symptoms. I wish I was as experienced a candidate as you.
So, following that, if a person has post-traumatic stress disorder like I do, and I have learned that there were some advantages of using that medication, I might be, feel a little more comfortable going into a medical store and get some of the right kind of advice to.
Yep, because there are strains that have higher levels of chemicals that might make you more anxious. And you don't want that. When you buy something off the street, you have no idea what it is, where it came from, anything. You know nothing about it. In a medical dispensary, you can say, this is my habit problem with, you know, whatever, anxiety, what do you recommend it? And then there are huge differences in THC levels and the CDC, CDC levels, that are all labeled on every product, and you can educate yourself. People are getting educated, and it's a huge economic opportunity for our state and for our people in all sorts of sectors, you know, going from medical uses all the way to the hemp uses, the whole spectrum. It's very exciting for our state to actually be getting somewhere with some of this stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of thoughts for everybody, both on the pro side of the appeal and on the negative side of the appeal. Governor Kate Brown had the foresight to see all these problems that are bounding because of the passing of the recreational marijuana. And that's one of the reasons why she advocated that the recreational use of, or sale of the marijuana be handled primarily to the pharmaceutical side, the medical side of the sales. And one reason I'm pretty certain that she's done that, and I have probably a direct line with her and her first person, is that she foresees so many problems in the future on how to regulate the recreational side of it that she's trying to put a little, not brakes, but a damper on the progression of this thing that's already here. It's voted by the citizens of the state. It's been voted in. And what I'm sure that she has in mind is she's trying to soften this whole thing so we can get it all figured out in our own communities, where recreational sales will take place, and how that will be handled, the law enforcement, and all the other things that are gonna be involved in this. And it's not gonna be an easy task, and I applaud her for that foresight. But in the meantime, I want to remind everybody, both pro and con, it's a law that's been voted in and the majority has spoken. So, I wanted to bring everybody's attention to these facts. I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. I was gonna let my husband take over.
Josh LaGelia, Lincoln Beach. I'll keep it pretty short because everything pretty much that needs to be said has been said.
Excuse me. Is it Deepwater Bay Josh or Joshua?
Either one is fine. Our intention is just to open a clean, secure, local business, not to bring any undue cloud onto the community or people that live there, or any additional unmitigated dangers to the people that live there. I've lived on the Oregon coast for most of my life. I've, I have children. One of my children go to neighbors for kids. I'm very interested that things are safe and secure here as they can be. There's really no hold in the bat. It's here. It's coming. And somebody is going to open up eventually, regardless of whether it's me with this project or you with another project, or however it goes down. So, I guess all things being equal, I guess I'm the right man for the job. I honestly believe I am. So, I'll just leave it at that until the wisdom of the councilman there.
Joshua?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, John.
In order for you to get this license to dispense medical marijuana, and maybe in pretty much immediate future, you have to get, be permitted by the state? Is that right?
I did. There's a pretty lengthy process that I have to go through in order to get the license to.
Specifically, though, do you go through a criminal background?
There is. Yeah, most of the Department of Homeland Defense checks it out. The FBI checks it out. And whoever at the state level is there. But I think the, I think the main gist of it is a ghostly FBI and a ghostly, not a bad actor, and a very scary character. So, this is my second one. I tried to open up a dispenser a while back when Lincoln County decided to enact their emergency ordinance back in, like, May or so. So, I've had two in the last, you know, six months, and as of now, I guess I'm okay.
And I've got just one other question is, and this is for children on premises, or is it under eighteen, under twenty-one?
Under eighteen can enter the building, into the waiting area. And the reason for that is because there's really, you have to get people to somewhere controlled in order to determine who they are to let them into a new area. So, basically, the waiting area is where, from there, it's determined who is who, what their credentials are, if they have an O M P card, or if they're just coming on years of Asian or they're for some other purpose. And from there, they can be led through the next level of security to the area where they can access the different products that are back for them.
Okay, and does the law give any dispensation for somebody that has a prescription, needs the medical marijuana, and they have got some, a child under twenty-one that has to be cared for?
Yeah, there's a caregiver's card that goes to these people. And so, if someone happens to be not of age to legally access the area, then they can send their caregiver in their stead to go through the same process to get whatever medicine that it is. But that's all recorded and regulated and monitored at the state level. I just check the cards.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Move on to the next section. A testimony from any person that is supporting or opposing the appeal, or whatever. All right, moving on. Item six, rebuttal by the adults. Do you have anything to add?
I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask you, what his background is. I couldn't hear anything about where he's been, where he's.
Medical. You know, like, I had to go to school for four years to be a nurse and work with the dispensing of medications. What's your medical background?
Well, I would say in this particular case, the licensure that exists for the purpose of a medical marijuana dispensary, it's kind of above and beyond the exact licensure that nurses are, doctors, doctors are, surgeons. It's kind of a different thing of the same field. And it's more, much more like a pharmacy than it would be.
What I don't understand is a pharmacist can recommend things or talk to you about things, but you can't go ahead and buy it without a clearance from a doctor. A doctor knows what another person's taking so that if you give them the marijuana, it might exacerbate, that's the word, the situation, and cause a problem.
They're initially given a prescription from the doctor, so on that, they move forward to. Generally, it's in an attempt to find something that will work for them. And it's kind of each individual person is allowed to, each person reacts differently to it. So, it's sort of, each person is able to decide with the input of their doctor or their caregiver or whatever, what it is that's doing the best thing for them.
But while they're deciding that, wouldn't it be better that they're on the main street? I've heard of a number of the towns who have it backed a little bit so that if they try driving or try doing things and it's not working.
Well, those are all zoning issues and stuff that really is outside of my control. But if those were the laws, I would certainly comply with them.
All right, thank you. If anybody or any party provides additional documents or evidence, this body may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Prior to the conclusion of the hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony. If there is no request for continuance or to hold the record open, the public hearing will be closed. The record will be closed, and this body will deliberate and make a decision.
Okay. Do we have to have a motion to close the record?
The mayor just read the statement, and just to be clear for the audience members, is there anyone here that wishes to ask for a continuation of this hearing or to keep the record open? So, there isn't. So, then the mayor can simply be.
So, so there isn't, so then the mayor can simply declare that the public hearing is closed and now the council will deliberate.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wonder if we're to explain to the audience what keeping the record open versus closing it, as if we've heard all the arguments that...
We just want to clarify it to everybody.
Yeah, it's, it, the record is closed...
By today, then... For, then by all means, uh...
Then, uh, then, uh, and then it would, it would forego any, uh, detail in the, uh, in the, in the regulations or laws that would, would be for or against that you could cite, uh, uh, for the business license. In other words, uh...